Welcome to the City Commission meeting Tuesday, March 4. Would you please call the -- let you get back to your chair, Brenda. Would you call -- please call the -- the roll?
Mayor McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Adam Cech. Commissioner Opelt?
Here.
Commissioner Mata?
Here.
Commissioner Mitten?
Here.
Mayor, we have four commissioners present. The quorum of three is met.
Thank you. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one proclamation today. Would you ladies like to join me? Okay. Whereas in 1911, International Women's Day was first honored in Austria, Denmark, Germany, and Switzerland, when more than 1 million women and men attended rallies campaigning for women's rights to work, vote, be trained, hold public office, and for an end to gender discrimination. And whereas in 1977, the United Nations General Assembly adopted a resolution calling on all member states to proclaim a day for women's rights and international peace. And following United Nations lead each year, the U.S. President issues a proclamation calling on all citizens to observe March as National Women's History Month, as well as a separate proclamation on International Women's Day, March 8. And whereas advancing the rights, opportunities, and full participation of women and girls is the great unfinished work business of the 21st century. And whereas International Women's Day is a day to celebrate the collective power of women, uphold women's achievements, recognize challenges, focus greater attention on women's rights and gender equality, encourage and mobilize all people to do their part to bring about positive change. Now, therefore, I, Karen McCullough, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, do proclaim Saturday, March 8, 2025, as International Women's Day.
Thank you.
Would you like to say some things?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, thank you for recognizing International Women's Day. We are a part of AAUW, the American Association of University Women, and this is our 10th year celebrating International Women's Day. We are having our event at the Manhattan Country Club, Saturday, March 8, from 5:00 to 8:00. The public is invited. It's not just for women. We have men coming also, so we would certainly like to have you there. And the dinner is at 6:00, and there that's paid $30, but the public forum is available to everybody. And we have a stellar group of panelists. We have Dr. Shardi Baird from Kansas State University at Advancement of Women in Science and Engineering, Sheila Ellis Gasper, the CEO of the Black Entrepreneurs of the Flint Hills, former Senator Lana Olean, and Paige Volgemoore. She's the president of the K-State Student Governing Association. They're going to speak a lot about leadership and challenges and achievements of women in our -- in their respective sectors, as well as what we can do next. So certainly, we want to invite the public to come. Everyone is welcome. It's not too late to RSVP. You can go to AAUW Manhattan branch on Facebook or on our website, and we encourage all of you to participate. I know it's Fake Patty's Day, but we're targeting a different demographic, so we hope you can all come. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Would you like to say anything?
I think we're fine.
Okay? Thank you. You know, Kansas had some women that did things way before the other people couldn't. We had the first mayor in Girard, Kansas, I think, way before women got the vote. So keep going. Thank you. Yay! Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Are there any public comments just of a general nation nature and not related to an item on the agenda? Seeing none? Oh, sorry. You've got to get up here faster, Gary.
Oh, sorry. It's just Joe and I on the sheet. It's three minutes, right? I hope that doesn't count because it's passing out.
Thank you.
Okay, Suzanne's on here. My name is Gary Olz. I live at 3308 Frontier Circle. And in my tradition of showing up to talk about property taxes, I'm going to shift and talk about sales taxes. The handouts that I gave you are in a particular order, and I just wanted to point out that the top sheet is an excellent sheet, summary sheet, kind of difficult to find, or at least for me, difficult to find. I found it in the 2024 Budget Book. I encourage anybody and everybody to look up the 2024 Budget Book and review it. It's several hundred pages long, so it's not light reading. It's pretty deep reading. And the 2025, for some reason, is still not available. I know I've talked to Rena a couple times, and it's still being worked on, even though that budget's been approved. I just think it's probably a lower priority, because I know you have to get audits done first, and that's particularly understandable. The next page is the most interesting thing that I found, because I talked about this last year, when Peter and I had a little bit of a conflict, that sales tax fund, $8 million. And I just attached that, because that's that half percent that goes into there. But the most interesting page is the one I found on the state website. And I don't know if you've seen this or not, perhaps you have, but I circled the most interesting part, is in 2024, the cities received $30 million in sales tax, $5 million, and I'm rounding, in compensating use tax. And I give this to you just because I encourage you, as you look at the 2026 budget, which evidently this is about the start of the cycle or the process, keep the sales tax in mind, because it's a big number. You only operate, as you know, on $17 million, because $21 million's got to go to RCPD, but the rest of that money comes from sales backs. And according to that top sheet that I gave you, it's budgeted about $41 million for 2024, as I recall. And there's probably even more in there. I just haven't figured out how to dice it out. So in conclusion, with one minute left, the last page that I gave you, I think I pointed out before, I just want to encourage you to ask the staff to produce some type of summary statement on -- for the website, or in print, if you want to put it in the library, like Riley County does, and probably other cities do. Give a summary to the taxpayers of where the revenue comes from and where -- or it's budgeted to come from, is a better way to say it, and where it's going to be potentially spent. I find an interesting quick story. Junction City, on the 25th, discovered that they had budgeted $8 million in sales tax, and they collected $14 million. So they're so happy that they've got an extra $6 million, and they can't figure out or can't wait to figure out where to spend it. That's probably typical. What I would ask is if there's any potential of excesses in terms of revenue, particularly from the sales tax side, could it be carried over possibly, a few million dollars carried over to the next year in order to reduce that which is needed from the taxpayers? Thank you very much. Wow.
I'm Joe Knopf, 104 Open Circle. Tonight, you've got a revenue bearing -- or IRB proposal for you, but I want to talk about IRBs in general with the clear demolition of my favorite building, not my favorite, with a building in town on Commerce Bank. I would remind you that you have a tax abatement policy, like the rules of basketball. It tells you what you have to do to get the ball through the hoop and whether you score or not. And that policy contains in it, a first premonition that abatement is for businesses that would compete directly with existing businesses will not be encouraged. We will look at -- and the criteria will be quality job creation and diversification of the local economy. I'm anxious to potentially ask the city to tell me, give me a copy of the file that has last -- that information in it. And I think all I need to do is say, I want the file on Commerce Bank HUD. Give me everything electronically in that file. Just transfer it, copy and paste into my USB port and my flash drive, and I'll look through all those documents to see whether or not what was complied, what rules were complied with to justify that grant. I haven't seen them in my review of the document so far. The document you have before you goes on to state that every year, there shall be a report of tax abatements annually, showing the status of all outstanding tax abatements and achievements of charge -- of target creations. I had done a request for information and found it myself. This is the 2022 annual report. There's no 2023 and there's no 2024 report. We don't know, I don't know, how many tax abatements there are in existence at this time. As I look through these, I see a number that are not even included. And I think the only things that are included here were done with economic development funds by the Chamber, MetaFab, whatever. But I'm not sure that even this proposal tonight, with $54 million of IRBs for Metalark, was even included in this kind of analysis. The bottom line is that we complain every year about the lack of a top property tax base in Manhattan because of schools, churches, Fort Riley, K-State, da-da-da-da-da. But this is a self-inflicted wound every time you grant a tax abatement. Tax -- IRBs have three components. A sales tax exemption, which is a 10% reduction on one half of the materials that are at $15 million, $750,000 of 70.5 million materials. It has a financing component of a reduced financing, and then it has a tax abatement. I say, give them the Snickers bar, give them a box of candy, but don't give them the licorice. This is not Halloween. You're not giving out candy.
Other comments?
Amber Starling, 408 Houston Street. Trust is built in a cycle of break and repair. This commission and its longstanding members have repeatedly broken public trust without repairs. Look at the fees for our public rec centers. We agreed to the special sales tax to build them on the condition that they would be free, but in January, they added fees equal to private gyms. In February, they said the cut from five to three minutes per speaker and from an unlimited number of speakers to just 30 minutes per line item was a test, and yet it is a standard part of the agenda since, with no further discussion. If it were a foregone conclusion, they should have said so, to do otherwise as bad faith. It was bad enough when we would get up here and speak our five minutes, and the commissioners would ignore public sentiment, only to unilaterally proceed with their own agenda. But to reduce speaking time, limit the number of speakers, which will happen on controversial issues, and thereby suppress the voices of your own constituents while claiming to serve us, that is insult to severe injury. Peter held a coffee at the library in February and admirably engaged with well over a dozen constituents. Thank you, Commissioner Opelt. It should be noted that he has repeatedly invited other commissioners to the event with no respondents. At his coffee, he remarked that he'd kept track of the speakers at the commission meeting prior, and found that most of them were under three minutes anyway, so he deduced that the rule wasn't a big deal. To me, it says the opposite, that the rule is unnecessary further damage to public trust for no real gain. But remember, trust is built in a cycle of break and repair. Mayor McCullough thinks deeply and often of the matter of public trust in the government and how to repair it. Well, here is your chance. The commissioners alone are in charge of public speaking rules, and the commissioners alone can change them. Restore the old public speaking rules, and you will restore a great deal of trust in this governing body. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Then we will move on to Commissioner comments.
I just want to wish congratulations to Manhattan High Wrestling Team. They came home state champions, and want to celebrate all of those wins we have.
Good job, Parks and Rec Department. Summer stuff opened up yesterday, and it went very well. I was able to register my son for summer camp, and we're very excited about that. So great job. I know it's always a very, very big demand right there, 8 o'clock on a Monday morning, but really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. I just had a couple things. One, of course, this weekend is our wonderful celebration of Fake St. Patty's Day, and I would really urge people to make sure your cars are locked and put them in the garage if you can. There's no use leaving attractive nuisances around. I live by City Park, and I've had some interesting meetings with people over the past 15 or 16 years, sometimes on my back porch. Anyway, also, if you're doing your spring cleaning, Household Hazardous Waste will be at Howey's this Saturday coming up, and you can bring in paint, batteries, you know, pretty much anything that you don't really want to throw in the waste stream or in your trash. And the wonderful thing about the paint is they somehow pour it all together, and it comes out with a color called Seattle Gray, which, because this is started in, it's all always sort of the same color. I don't remember. It's no different if you put in pinks or blues, or there's enough white to make it into Seattle Gray, and they use that to paint a lot of county fairgrounds and things like that. So please, if you have that kind of stuff, get rid of it properly. Okay. We're moving on to the consent agenda. These are items of a routine and housekeeper nature and/or items which have been previously reviewed by the commission and may be approved in one motion. We will take comments on the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Brenda, it's the move, Mr. Turner. Would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Opelt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitten?
Yes.
Mayor McCullough?
Yes.
Motion carries for to zero.
Great. I'm going to open a public hearing now. The public hearing procedure and public participation will be based on the legal requirements for the required hearing. We're going to consider issuing healthcare facilities revenue bonds for a new Home Plus facility at Metalark Hills. Jason, before you start, could you just kind of give us a short desk?
Mayor McCullough?
Yeah. Jamie's going to leave us, because she has a conflict of interest. Could you just give us a short definition of what IRBs are?
Yeah. Industrial revenue bonds are established via federal and state law that allow municipalities like Manhattan to be a conduit. We serve as an entity that folks can approach us with applications to issue industrial revenue bonds. When we are quoted or referenced as the issuer of these bonds, these bonds are not actually debt of the city. They are mechanisms, as one of our public speakers was highlighting, there are a number of benefits that an entity can receive through the issuance of IRBs. You can leverage a sales tax exemption on construction. You can leverage a property tax abatement. Or Metalark is one of our unique users of this tool. They will actually use it to issue debt and carry that debt, and there are advantages to doing that. So as a matter of history, the city has routinely engaged in the issuance of IRBs at little to no risk in terms of debt or in terms of obligation of that money. We, again, we are simply a conduit between the tool and the end user leveraging that tool.
Thank you.
You bet. We do have an application before you this evening, a request to issue industrial revenue bonds. There's a couple different pieces and parts to this. There was a prior issue done in 2021 that included three properties, and those three properties were not at Metalark. Two of them were actually single-family homes, one located where some of you may recognize and remember Mrs. Stone living in this home, and it got transferred into a Metalark Home Care Plus facility. So they remodeled this home on the west side of the community. They did another one of these in Riley County, and that is the one that they do plan to pull out of that program, and I think they're going to sell the asset. So the prior action identified three properties. They want to remain tax-exempt on the two properties remaining as part of that action, but they want to remove the one off Falcon Road near Riley, Kansas. So that's a part of the resolution that's for your consideration this evening. The other part of that resolution is contemplating an additional issuance of just over $50 million for an improvement, I believe, of about 43 units at the Metalark campus. So there are two distinct items, but the resolution addresses both actions. The hearing tonight is anticipating those actions in the future. You're going to see a request in the near future for a sales tax exemption, but you're also going to get further along the line of issuing that $50 million roughly in industrial revenue bonds to support an addition here at Metalark's campus. Chris Nelson, their CFO, is in the audience and can answer questions specifically about what is happening at Metalark. With the resolution and the hearing tonight, two main things. Prior action, the commission took keeping properties in a tax-exempt status. When you remove one, you have to acknowledge that, and it remains in existence for the two other properties that were part of that 2021 action. The other part of tonight's action is a resolution, same resolution, that identifies that future issuance of just over $50 million for the 43 units on their campus. Any questions of staff at this time? We can introduce Chris, and he can answer questions and give you a brief presentation.
I just have a couple of questions for the city attorney. The -- because we had one commissioner missing, and one recused themselves, so we have three. Our guidelines is quorum is three. Now, if we were under -- our old rules used to be four, so if we were under those old rules, would we not be able to take this up?
Correct.
So I'm kind of patting myself on the back. I fought to get us down to three in order to do this.
You knew this was coming.
Yeah. Now, for the vote, it's not an ordinance, so can it pass two to one?
This -- let me take a look at the statute and confirm that with you. This is a question we probably should have confirmed with bond counsel, but I'll take a quick look and make sure it's counted on who votes and not all elected.
Okay, because I remember when we did it, we said if it was a true ordinance, we'd have to still have a majority of the body, but paying bills and things like that, we could go ahead and do.
That's correct. And the city code for the adoption of an ordinance is based on a majority of the five have to adopt the ordinance, but other actions don't require it. It depends on the statute.
So, okay. Thank you.
We do have bond counsel on the phone this evening, so if they heard the discussion and asked comments.
You turned your mic off. I believe it's Sam. Oh. We do have bond counsel on the phone. I believe Sam has joined us from the Wichita office. Sam, did you hear the question, and can you respond this evening?
Can you repeat the question?
So we have three seated commissioners. Our local quorum, we've set at three, and Katie may need to hop in here to reiterate the question. The resolution tonight that's under consideration for the Metalark Hills item, if it were a split vote, like a two to one in favor of, it doesn't represent the majority of the seated commission, but could two actually pass the resolution this evening if the vote fell out that way?
I do not have the answer to that right off the top of my head, but I will take a look right now.
Okay. And I think Katie's looking as well, so thank you.
Jason, while we're thinking about it, Metalark does not pay any?
So Metalark, at the moment, does not pay any property taxes.
That's true.
So the new addition would just be more, no property taxes?
Yeah, and they're in an exempt status, and they want to remain there. And their approach is more about the sales tax exemption on the construction materials. And then, one of the few recipients of IRBs that actually use the tool as far as pursuing that financing options that are available through it. And again, I think Chris can expand on their history and what they've done with IRBs. We really don't have another user group like them in Manhattan. Now, we've had a lot of people request IRB tax exemption or abatements and sales tax exemptions, but they are one of the few, and there's some older recipients in our history that have also done this, but Metalark has clearly been our most consistent.
Okay.
Chris? Opportunity?
So I'll quickly just highlight some of the project. I mean, just an item of note, the agenda listed as a Home Plus facility. That is the facility we will be selling. That is north of Riley was a Home Plus facility, but the new project that we want to issue the new debt for will be independent living units, along with a wellness portion of the building. So it would be 43 independent living units with starting square footage of 1,200 square feet. Majority of those units would be 1,400 square feet. There also would be a clubhouse, community rooms type space for those residents in that building to go with underbuilding parking. The second component of the project is wellness space, which would consist of a fitness center that all the residents of Metalark Hills would have access to space or fitness classes, and then space for our Parkinson's and memory programs. Currently, we have around 750 participants in those two programs, and about 70% of those participants do not live at Metalark. They live in the Manhattan community at large, and they come to our campus to receive support, to participate in support groups, educational classes, exercise classes, and things like that. So that program would be dedicated to those two programs. Another space would be a space dedicated for what's called Rocksteady Boxing. Research has shown that boxing is one of the best forms of exercise that folks with Parkinson's can do, and you have to get a certification to have this program, which we have, and so there would be space in this building for that program as well. And then the third component of the space is where this new building will be located will be adjacent to our pond that's on our campus that residents use for fishing and other just outdoor time. It needs some work and improvement, so we want to clean out that pond, reline it, enlarge it, so we have more success with fish living and to create better opportunities for fishing and for our residents to enjoy that outdoor space. And then there'd be some improvements to the trail system around the pond as well. So Jason highlighted, I think, this is a little more of a closer view of where that building will be on our campus. So our main building is there on the bottom part of the screen. The Tuttle Creek entrance is up to the -- up off the top of the screen, so as you come in off Tuttle Creek and driving onto campus to the right will be where that new building is located. And that's more of a zoomed-in view of the high-level floor plan of the building. Ground level with underbuilding parking, and then the purple and yellow space is the wellness center portion of the building, zoomed in of the wellness space for the building, which will be the exercise classes and activity slash classroom spaces and space for the boxing, as well as office space for staff. Floor plans of the units themselves, how those will be laid out for the independent living portion, and then just a view of what the front of the building may look like on the campus. Happy to answer any questions about this upcoming project or the sale of the Home Plus facility and that piece of the resolution.
So these are going to be net new living units?
Correct.
Okay.
John? Questions?
Okay. Are there any comments from the public?
John, questions?
Okay, are there any comments from the public?
I'm Joe Knopf at 104 Oakland Circle. I'd like to make specific comments about this project. First of all, I'm not against Meadowlark. I, I think it's a great facility. It's a great asset to our community. Having a tax exempt, property tax exempt gym and facility is what drives the owner of Genesis crazy, and he has gone to the state legislature saying if the YMCA and Meadowlark get tax exempt status for their gyms, why don't I? Well, I'm not going to hear to argue that point. I'm not sure I even agree with him on a lot of things, but a matter of fairness, it is. These, this is a commercial activity. I understand it's done by a not-for-profit, and I understand that there are no sale, or no, or they're tax exempt, but Gary's going to talk about options to recover some of that property tax. But for those listening, and those watching, and those thinking, $54 million, of that usually half of it is materials, half of it's labor. $27 million of sales tax, 10% of that is $2.7 million savings, $2.7 million. The rest of us who are building houses for our parents or remodeling our parents' houses or building houses for elderly are not getting that exemption. Why? Why, why does this one get it and this one doesn't? Well, the tax law allows it, you guys. So income, so sales tax, most of that state don't care, but it is a benefit that you ought to consider when giving this away. The revenue bonds, again, as I mentioned earlier, commercial rate 7%, they might get 5%. At 2% is significant over 20 years on $55 million, and that fifth, that savings is paid through federal tax breaks given to rich people who want to get tax-free income and not pay income tax. So, but that's not our, that's not coming out of my pocket directly. I'm, 300 million Americans are paying that. Kansans are paying the sales tax, but we are paying property tax. And I would suggest to you that in their application, we ask them, what new jobs are you creating? You ask them, and when you compare that to your resolution, I look down at the bottom. First of all, this is not commercial, this is not residential, or this is not commercial, this is not industrial, and on their chart, they list seven new employees, all a laborer, a driver, very significant, no significant job improvement or criteria here. So it technically doesn't meet the job, the industrial revenue criteria, in my opinion. I'm not here to, to stop it on that basis, but I am asking you to give special consideration to a payment in lieu of property taxes for a project that's getting this significant benefit.
Gary Olds, Gary Olds, Gary Olds, 3308 Frontier Circle. As Joe concluded, this was your one and only opportunity to do something for the citizens. What your decision tonight is for the city, not necessarily for the citizens, that's the rub for you guys. Sometimes you have to make a decision that's good for the city, not good for the citizens. Sometimes it's good for the citizens, not good for the city. It kind of goes back and forth. They're not the same. They are not the same. Similar, but not the same. Had the staff brought to you a proposal, or you had brought to the staff a proposal of offering this $54 million in industrial revenue bonds, and I know they're going to come back for the sales tax exemption, I'm not talking about that, but had you presented to them or negotiated with them a payment in lieu of taxes, as you did with the Manhattan, not you, as the commission did with the Manhattan Housing Authority decades ago, perhaps could have been done with Meadowlark decades ago, but at least they would have some skin in the game. So when the police show up, when the fire department shows up, when other services show up, whatever, they're actually contributing. Right now, they hold that tax exempt status on property taxes, and they pay nothing. Now fortunately, the people who live there consume, and you collect sales tax, so there's an upside on that, but obviously, none of the sales tax goes to RCPD because they get all property taxes. I would urge you, although it's not going to change your vote, I'm confident of that, is always look at the pilot option. Under KSA 121742, under the IRBs, you have that option. You could have asked for $50,000 a year or $100,000 a year. They have $48 million worth of property up there, an appraised property, according to Ann Burton, the county appraiser, and they're going to pay zero. Now, that's the way it is, and I understand that, and I'm not against Meadowlark Hills because maybe in about 10 years, I'm going to be there, okay? But the point is, you have one opportunity to ask for a pilot or negotiate a pilot, and you didn't do it, from what I've read, and the staff didn't propose it. Maybe that's normal. Maybe there are times that you can and times that you can't, but my understanding is, according to the statute, that you could have asked for a pilot, and that would have contributed toward the $38.5 million in property taxes that are collected in 2025 budget from property owners. Of course, it's the 2026 budget. So just keep that in mind. I don't know that you can change that because there may be a deadline for them to be able to get their IRB out, but the pilot, even small pilots for any and all of these IRBs would have been helpful. Fortunately, Commerce Bank is going to be paying the base, as I recall, of, but not the end.
Would you like to, go ahead?
I'll, I'll be brief. So certainly Meadowlark was formed in 1976 by a group of local citizens to meet the needs of the community and have a, a spot for folks as they age, to age well in the community of Manhattan, and since we've opened our doors, we've, we've served and met that need, and, and we aim to continue to meet that need. From a high-level business standpoint, any business that is stagnant and does not grow will eventually die. It'd be a significant part, that would significantly hurt the community of Manhattan if Meadowlark was not here. More specifically, 40 to 50% of our residents in our healthcare area utilize Medicaid, which means they've exhausted all of their resources. I wouldn't expect folks to know this, but the state Medicaid programs do not reimburse you at the full cost of, of the care for, for those residents. So the way for us to continue to provide high levels of care is continue to reinvest in our campus, such as these projects for, for the 43 new independent living units. So on, on the surface, it, you know, may seem like, how is this meeting the needs of Manhattan? Well, it's continuing to provide for those resources for, for the citizens of Manhattan, and just a high-level number over the, since 2020, 777 nursing homes in the country have closed their doors. An additional 20% of nursing homes in the country have had to shut down a portion of their buildings due to high inflation and not keeping up with, with reimbursement. So certainly, I, I certainly understand the benefits of, of property tax exemption. Certainly, the state establishes the statutes. We, we meet all the criteria to, to meet those statutes, but we also provide a great benefit to the city of Manhattan and its citizens.
Thank you.
A point of order before you start my time for City Manager Doolin and for Attorney Jackson. Is this not a public hearing and thereby governed under the rules where the speakers get five minutes? You're expected to hear back from you, and we get two minutes to respond.
This isn't the first time that we've mishandled a public hearing.
Our agenda tonight says that for the public hearing, that the, the opportunity to be limited up to three minutes for an initial period of 30 minutes. That was what was published in our agenda.
Tax hearings and public hearings follow state statute, which says that it is five minutes with expected response from the commissioners and two minutes to respond.
I think our procedure has a public, member of the public commenting, and then if the commission would like us to address that in more detail, we're, I'm happy to do that after the commission's, at the commissioner's request.
Katie, is she correct?
The statute does not require five minutes for this statute, or excuse me, for this IRB hearing.
But it's a public hearing, and there is no statute that says public hearings get five minutes?
Not for the IRB, no, and we, that's why I verified with the city manager that we published three minutes.
Okay.
In our notices, and that is what was published.
Very good, thank you. I primarily have questions that I'm sure that we're not going to answer. One of the questions that I had was specifically, how much of our land is, you know, free of property taxes? At Peter's Coffee, I believe the answer was 40%. 40% of the land in the city of Manhattan is tax exempt. I do also wonder what burden this facility puts on the fire service, ambulance service, police service, and public utilities without recompense. And then I do wonder, and I hope that the commissioners do as well, why Meadowlark needs the sales tax exemption and these bonds is the advantage of not paying property tax insufficient? Can they not afford to do this without the city's help? Thank you.
Are you commenting?
I was gonna, Kevin, could you please correct me if I'm wrong, or, or one of you, but they do pay utilities, right? Pay water and sewer, so that would go into those utility fees just for that one, one port, portion.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that we do have a large part of our tax base not-for-profit, and it is very difficult for Manhattan having that kind of thing. There are other communities, particularly in California, who have issued what's called curb rates, and those, you know, just to adjust particularly, perhaps like the Presbyterian Church that's on a whole city block, because they do need our fire and our police and our, you know, other qualities. In Kansas, we do not have that, so we're sort of, this is not a, a local decision. This is a state decision, so, you know.
Will this particular facility require upgrades to the water or sewer to be able to handle this, this amount of humans?
No.
No, it won't?
No.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay. So the applicant would like motion, requested action.
Well, do we have any other comments or discussions?
I don't see anybody jumping up.
I mean, between the three of us?
Sure, go ahead. Sorry.
Do, do we have ample time to figure out whether we need two or three votes on this?
I can answer it from the city perspective, because we have a city ordinance, as you mentioned Commissioner Mata, that requires an affirmative vote of three, three members for an ordinance to pass, and our policy states that everything else is just a majority of those present unless the statute requires otherwise. That's why I had deferred to our bond counsel earlier since they handled this item, but in terms of our city policy, a resolution can be adopted with a majority of those present.
Yeah, I, I kind of wanted to just chat about the, this pilot program. This was honestly the first time I've heard of it, so it, it may be too late for, for this type of project, and frankly, I think Meadowlark's mission is that if, if we go bankrupt because we're trying to help Meadowlark better serve the seniors in our community, I, I don't think we're going to go bankrupt because we're trying to better serve the seniors in our community, but I do think that it's something that we might be, at least be able to consider on future IRBs.
Payments in lieu of taxes, if received and negotiated in the realm of property taxes, have to run back through the county and be distributed by the mill levy. So when you think about the city of Manhattan at about 11.8 to 12% of what is generated on a per-dollar basis for our property taxes, you're looking at about 12 cents on the dollar with a pilot actually coming back to the city of Manhattan for city of Manhattan expenses. Those other 78 cents are going to Riley County Police, County School District. So whenever we negotiate a pilot, we do make sure you all are aware, that money is not all coming back to the city of Manhattan. It runs back through the county and is distributed to all the entities. Now, if you don't call it a pilot and you just want a payment back to the organization, the city, then, you know, we're negotiating something other than a pilot for that payment.
Is that something that we've done in the past?
Your pilot, the pilot with MHA is, is a good example of one that actually does go back through that process. We negotiated with one of the early tax credit developers, and I say early, probably about 2007, 2008, where we did receive a portion of the sales tax exemption back. They made a payment to the city, but it, it's few and far between.
Yeah, so I do hear what Gary's saying, and Joe, I think you're trying to get me to get at this too, but, you know, yes, the city only receives 12% of it, but since everyone who lives in Manhattan pays property taxes to Riley County and the school district and the city, it, it does kind of go to benefit them a little bit. So, yeah, I mean, I think I'm okay with this project, but it's, I think it's something that we might want to look at in future projects.
Hey, I think your housing policy, if you want to get into that realm, in terms of what would kick in, some sort of payment back to the city, whether it's from the construction exemption or actually into an abatement scenario. An abatement scenario, you always have the flexibility to require a certain percentage be paid, and the accuracy of Commerce Bank building, we structured that in a way where they will pay what is currently valued on that site for the next 10 years.
Sure, and we haven't talked about, you know, cost of these for the residents, but this is a, a housing project, so it kind of goes into that as well, so, yeah, that's all I got.
So Jason, for the public, could you explain what we're doing tonight? We're, we're authorizing or not authorizing industrial revenue bonds, which will then free up sales tax and property tax?
Yeah, there's an intent to issue future IRBs. This resolution is expressing your intent to support that future issuance of industrial revenue bonds. It also kicks in the process to hold a couple of other properties in that tax exempt status that you did previously, like in 2021. They are removing a property, and they're acknowledging that in tonight's resolution, but there are supplemental agreements on your agenda that the mayor will be asked to execute that'll keep those two other properties in an exempt status after they sell the property up in Riley.
Couple, a couple of questions which you went over, so if we do the, you said we do the pilot, then it gets, you know, divided up amongst all the entities. You mentioned the police department, but that's really true for the police because we're paying for the.
I separated it from our city of Manhattan, city manager.
Oh, okay.
Part of the mill levy, that's why.
You tend to always do.
I do that, I know, I'm sorry. At 12%, so the rest, the 78 does include our CPD.
Okay, but you mentioned also that if we wanted, we could just do a separate agreement saying you want to do this deal with us, we want $100,000 a year directly to the city.
You could calculate out what they're receiving in a benefit and then ask for some of that benefit back, sure.
So, and not call it a pilot, just.
Correct.
This is just.
This is.
Just, just what we want in order to do.
Yeah, there's a payment required on, upon receipt of that benefit or realization of that benefit.
I mean, and you, can you do it on, on an annual basis, or is it just a one-time?
Uh, I, I think you can structure those deals how, you know, you can negotiate and see what they're willing to do. Again, we have, we're limited in that experience, and preferably, I think we would like our development community to know that, like via a policy if we're going to head that direction, so it's right up front. We can have those conversations early. If they're going to leverage this tool, this is the expectation of the governing body. Just real quick, valuation of Manhattan is, is interesting. There's $8 billion in valuation total, and roughly $4 billion of that is taxable. Of the $4 billion taxable, roughly, $3 billion is residential. Of the four billion taxable roughly, three billion is residential.
So, but I think what Gary and Joe brought up is very valid. And I mean, I think it's something we should think about. But again, we're kinda after the fact in this. And it is getting the housing that we are trying to move forward and get. But I think it is something to look at. I kinda like the side deal and getting all the money part of it as well.
It also took me just till a couple of minutes ago to realize that pilot was an acronym for paying the annual taxes, in case anyone else was curious.
Any more questions for staff or any more conversations?
No, I'll move that we approve resolution number zero three zero four two five taxi, determining the advisability and of issuing industrial revenue bonds for a new Metalark Hills independent living facility and authorizing the release of the Riley County facility previously financed by industrial revenue bonds and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute any necessary documents related to the release.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Brenda, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.
Do you want to go get? Thank you. Okay, our last thing on the, on the agenda, and we thank Eric for sitting through all that, is to consider the 2023 audit.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. Thank you, Jared. Rena Neal, Director of Finance. I will go over a brief PowerPoint slide regarding our 2023 city audit results. And then Dr. Higgins, he is the Chair of the Municipal Audit Board. He will come up to provide additional comments. The Finance Department works closely with Alan Gibson-Hulick, CPAs out of Wichita, Kansas, to help prepare our work papers and trial balances for our annual audit. Our financial statements were audited by BT and Co. out of Topeka. And within your packet, you had the basic financial statements report, which includes the independent auditor's report, a report to the city commission, and then the base, the passenger facility charge report for the Manhattan Regional Airport. The 2023 city audit results, they were presented fairly in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and were received the highest rating of an unmodified opinion. The city had one finding, which can be found on pages one thirty-three through one thirty-four of the report from BT and Co. And as similar to the finding from the 2022 audit that was presented in October, the management response and corrective action plan has been provided. And it deals with the timely reporting of CDBG subrecipient information to the federal government. And so within that report, these are the sections that were presented this year. Then the schedule of expenditure and federal awards deals with all of the grants that we received from the federal government. And then that one finding, again, related to the noncompliance of timely filing of our reports related to the subrecipient agreement. So whenever we have subrecipient agreements that you all approve, we have thirty days that we have to file them with the federal government. And so we're back on track with getting those filed once you all have approved those. In 2023, we had twenty-eight million in, yeah, twenty-eight million in federal expenditures. I'm missing a digit in there. And then the, those were related to the U.S. Department of Defense, Housing and Urban Development, Department of Transportation, Department of Treasury, NASA, and then the Department of Health and Human Services and Department of Homeland Security. So the Department of Health and Human Services is really related to the DESIP grant. That's how it's filed underneath. The major programs that were evaluated were as follows. In total, ninety-seven percent of the federal expenditures, the DESIP grant of three million, which was eleven percent, community development block grants, a little bit over nine hundred thousand, three percent. And then the airport improvement program of twenty-three point four million at eighty-three percent due to that runway extension project. We are now preparing for the 2024 audit. We have met with departments to discuss the grants they received in 2024 as well as subscriptions and leases. And we have a new pronouncement. Each year it seems like we have a new pronouncement, but this is related to our various leave accruals and how those should be reported from a liability standpoint. It is in progress. We have, are working with AGH to prepare those documents. And then we should have all of that information complete by June. I did speak with our auditors last week and they have us scheduled to begin in July with the goal of completing the audit by the end of September. Are there any questions?
I know you all have been working really hard to get this and, and get us back on schedule, so I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
The CDBG is probably for Stephanie. Did that, was that, was that with the housing rehab program?
No, it's not related to the housing rehab program. It's related to like whoever receives additional contracts through us, like MISA, Crisis Center, agencies like that.
Okay.
That's what that was related to.
Got it. And so was it, because we had the same kinda thing. Was it the same recipient or just, just?
It's just the timing. So when we first got the finding for the 2022 audit, it was late last year. And so it's essentially the same thing in terms of just the timing of when those reports should have been filed for the 2023 related information.
That's kinda what I figured, alright. Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other questions?
I don't think so.
Okay. Dr. Higgins.
Thank you, Rena. Eric Higgins, Chair of the Municipal Audit Board, I guess we call ourselves now, for the city. And I appreciate the opportunity. I'd like to thank Commissioner Mata, who serves on that committee with me, as well as the other members, Aaron Von Felt and Rich Jankovic, for doing the work on that. So we reviewed these audit results you saw, both with Rena and spoke with the accountants from BT and Co. as well to make sure that we understood what was going on. You know, basically, as you mentioned, it's basically the same mistake that was made twice. We reviewed with Rena the document that we created many years ago that relates to, you know, the various entities that receive these grants, that relates to them acknowledging that they understand what the requirements are, what the rules are. So we reviewed that document. We made some suggestions for some further changes to just make sure that, that things go well. I believe Rena would agree that with our new ERP system, building that sort of responsibility checklist, if you will, into that system and then tracking it's gonna be a lot easier than it is today where the documents kinda float out in whatever SharePoint or whatever thing that is that's floating around out there. So I think that's gonna help a lot as we come to these audits every year and making sure that people just understand what those requirements are. And, you know, in stopping short of hiring a grant administrator for the city, which I'm sure those that don't want to pay taxes anymore wouldn't really like, this is the way we need to work it. And so I think with this new system and the new ERP system, it's, it's gonna be more, more efficient for us, more straightforward, easier to catch these things. So we're looking forward to that happening. Big thanks to Rena, obviously pulling this off with everything that had been going on. You know, it fell behind. We're confident, feel confident, we're back on track, be back. Hopefully you'll see me again here in the fall. And we'll be back on track with the schedule for the audits. And so, but, you know, overall, you know, I think we're pleased with it. And we're pleased with the changes that Rena is looking and implementing into that form to make sure, again, that just people are aware of the checklist and know what they've gotta do. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
I really don't have a question, but I just want to thank Rena and everyone on the Audit Board. And we talked about this thing, the recurring error in, as was said, came up with this checklist to try to have things that are kinda in all the type of grants, because these things are floated out to everyone throughout the whole organization and they have to take care of it. And there was one catchall we said, which is like you're stating you understand what you need to do because you can't build everything into the checklist. Now, that doesn't mean that the person could misunderstand it and make a mistake, but they shouldn't come back to you and say, well, I had no idea. No, you, you're stating you looked into this and you knew how it was supposed to be. So we wanted to make sure there was some accountability there, you know, should something happen again. So I think that's, as you said, the best we can do unless we.
Yeah, no, I, I think it is.
This, we're gonna hire more redundancy to go with.
Right.
I had a, a community member reach out to me and ask about internal audit controls. I'm not super familiar with what that means, but can you talk about that a little bit?
Well, that's, that's really what this report is looking at, to make sure that the controls are in place to make sure that, you know, you, you can go back in time and we had some issues with cash collections back in, in parks and rec and people paying for sodas and things like that back in the day. But just to make sure that those things are being followed, the procedures that we have are correct and being followed. And that's really a lot of the role of the auditors, in addition to obviously looking at the financial statements, but to look at those controls. And that's where you come up with a finding like we, we saw, where a document was overlooked that it really should be as part of our internal control. And, and again, it happens, but that's what they're looking at. So they do test those procedures and controls as well to make sure that, that we're following those things. Do we have a, a list of what our, our internal controls are?
I didn't bring my computer up here, but the auditors, we provide about ten documents or so in terms of all the various types of controls that we have in place related to payroll processing, accounts payable, accounts receivable, any revenue, as well as how we do journal entries and transfers, how our financial system is set up in terms of the security with that. So there's about ten of them that we review every year. And then they use those documents to actually go out and perform the audit test. As well as, we have a cash handling procedure manual that we have, the various departments update each year. So then they reach out to all of those points of contact and then they review to make sure that they are actually following the process that they say they do.
Sure, alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Eric?
Thank you.
I think you're Chair of this committee for life.
I've been on it a while, but I'm happy to help out. And if you want, I know we talked a little bit about fun reading budgets. This is a really fun read, so if you want a hundred and fifty pages to put you to sleep, take a look at the audit report.
Thank you. So we consider the audit, do we take any action?
Yes.
Yeah, we have a public comment for it.
Yeah, public comment, I'm sorry.
You'll have public comment and then you will take action to receive the 2023 audit results.
Okay.
I do have a quick question.
Sure.
When, can we get an update on the ERP implementation? I'm just very curious how that's going.
Of course. We are planning to go live July first. Jared is here, he can chime in as well. We have had two testing sessions. They're called conference room pilots, where they've taken our requirements and then put them in the form of the actual system. And then we walk through to see if the requirements are flowing the way we anticipated. And then the first time we tested that out, we had some red marks and then some things that we needed to add on to. And then we did the conference room pilot two back in February. So we're getting ready to prepare for SIT. That's another training solution that we have to go through. And then user acceptance training would be our last. And then we'll also then train our staff, but the goal is July first to be up and running.
Very cool, you sound very excited about it.
It's, yeah, we are excited. It's just a lot of work to get to that point.
Yeah, I'm sure.
We're working through it.
I'm sure, well, good. I'm glad to bring us into the twentieth century.
Yes.
Twenty-first century.
I think we're barely into that.
Yeah.
It's great that different people have enthusiasms for different subjects. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other? Go for it, somebody.
Oh, public comment, yeah.
Wait, I had public comment, there's no public here.
Do we not have any?
We have no public, so, well, we have one public.
I move we receive the results of the 2023 city audit.
Second.
Been moved in second. Brenda, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Mitten?
Yes.
Mayor McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
That being all, I would.
I move we adjourn the March fourth, 2025 city commission meeting.
Good job.
Second.
It's moved in second. Brenda, would you call the roll?
Mayor McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitten?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.